Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible Tragedy. This video covers the testimony given at the U.S. Coast Guard's public hearing into the Titan Incident by Mr. Scott Talbot, Search and Rescue Specialist at the U.S. Coast Guard. And this is also the very last testimony that was given at the public hearing, and so we'll conclude this channel's coverage of it, though there is still some extra material that was posted afterwards on the U.S. Coast Guard's website, which I will also be covering. This includes a further interview slash testimony, as well as that, there will also be a couple of other videos in my Ocean Gate coverage to look out for before finally, my full-length documentary will be uploaded. As for this testimony, it takes a look at how the Coast Guard's search and rescue operation was organized and executed, including what improvements could and should be made according to Mr. Talbot and his team, who conducted a case study approaching the search and rescue operation like an investigation. It includes interesting insights such as maps of the routes that search planes took at the time, as well as a heat map of where Titan was predicted to be, had it risen to the surface and drifted. Also, we hear about how things were conducted back on land with the U.S. Coast Guard, including changeovers of staff, for example, fatigue, and other factors that could have perhaps been handled better, though due to the nature of the event and its rarity, some of these could not be avoided. Anyway, I will let the testimony speak for itself, which will do a lot clearer than I, and I'll be back again at the end. I will keep my parts brief in this one, as it is a lengthy video already, but I just wanted to take a quick second to say a huge thank you for your ongoing support and for following along with me through these public testimonies. It is greatly appreciated. So, having said that, let's just jump straight in and hear the final testimony of the U.S. Coast Guard's public hearing, given by Scott Talbot.
Mr. Talbot, thank you for making the trip up from New Orleans to support this proceeding. Mr. Talbot, Lieutenant, or sorry, Mr. Fawcett will start the questioning today.
Good afternoon, Mr. Talbot.
Good afternoon, Mr. Fawcett.
If I'm unclear in my questions, please let me know. If you need some time to look at exhibits, don't let me rush you, okay? All of my questions relate to the timeframe leading up to the accident on the Titan, which occurred on June 18th, 2023. We will talk about the Coast Guard Search and Rescue Authority and Jurisdiction, the convening of the 2023 Titan Search and Rescue Case Study Board, the observation findings and lessons learned found in the After Action Report of that case study, and then the Coast Guard Search and Rescue in support of subsea operations. So, you're a search and rescue specialist in the 8th Coast Guard District. Would you explain basically what your duties are in general?
Yes, sir. Basically, every district in the Coast Guard kind of aligns with what Captain alluded to earlier with, aligns with the search and rescue regions. So each district is basically aligned with the search and rescue region. When we realigned in the early 2000s and we got rid of our OSR branches, our Office of Search and Rescue branches on the district staffs, they replaced it with a GS, a GS, a civilian employee for continuity purpose that they called a SAR specialist. And basically, what each SAR specialist for each region is responsible for is managing the search and rescue program on behalf of the SAR Coordinator for that district. Currently, I serve for Admiral Barata, and I work through the Chief of Incident Management at, at the district, just like the rest of my peers do.
So in the briefest of terms, could you describe the training that the search and rescue personnel receive to work in the Command Centers or the Rescue Coordination Centers of the Coast Guard, just in general?
Yes, sir. The, so the Coast Guard Command Centers are currently, they have four main watch positions at the sectors. The sector watch positions, you have a telecommunications specialist, we call a communications unit watch standarder, they're usually your juniorist individual, they're the ones that man the Rescue 21 array, monitor for DSC alerts, any other GMDSS type alerts that come in through the command center. Then you've got your Situation Unit Controller, which is also manned by an OS, usually an E5. They keep a situational awareness of everything going on in that particular area of responsibility that that command center is over. Then you have your Operations Unit Controller, which back in, before we became sectors, we called SAR controllers. They are, for all feasibility, the person that manages the search and rescue mission with regards to SAR Ops, the resource allocation, making sure that risk management's being done properly throughout the incident. They have probably the longest school. It's a four-week course that they have to attend before they can become qualified called Maritime Search Planning, which we are currently realigning into NSAR's course. But the Maritime Search Planning, basically, they, they go, it's foundational policy with regards to search and rescue, all the way up to the botnology and how to use the Coast Guard SAR Op Search and Rescue Optimal Planning System, which is the Drift Software that we use to conduct search and rescue and plan searches in the oceanic environment.
So those personnel that work within that operations center, to perform their duties, do they have to be qualified and designated?
They have to be qualified and designated, and they have minimum requirements that have to be met, currency requirements that have to be done monthly, annually, both with the, the planning software, as well as the policy reviews that are conducted within the command center, which is outlined in the Command Center Manual. But even though CG SAR sets the, the requirements, they're outlined in the, the Command Center Manual and the Coast Guard Addendum.
And if I stepped into a command center, would I be able to see the position and the availability of Coast Guard search and rescue forces?
Yes, you would. It would basically, in some form or fashion, there's usually a status board, whether it's electronic, or it could be just your traditional whiteboard that we've used for years, and it'll have everything outlined with regards to availability, ready resources, whether you have a, what aircraft is ready at the time, B0 is what we refer to it, that can meet the response standard required underneath the Coast Guard Addendum and Coast Guard SAR policy.
Would there be a means to, within the same operations center, to know where commercial vessels would be within your area of responsibility based on a system called the Automatic Identification System?
There is, there is a program that we track AIS feeds on in the command centers, and we do often use that for the prosecution of SAR as well. You know, you get a EPERB, electronic position indicating radio beacon alert, or an ELT alert, ELT activation, or a PLB activation, Personnel Locating Beacon. We can oftentimes look up that information and then basically cross-correlate it with the AIS tracks with the registration data for that particular beacon. But it's not readily available in front of them at all times necessarily, a lot of times just because of bandwidth restrictions that we see, and then the bandwidth needs for SAR Ops to run, they'll shut that down in order to make SAR Ops run better.
If you needed to look out on the high seas and international waters and determine where a vessel's position was using the Automatic Identification System for a commercial vessel that might be required to carry it, and you switched on that system, in general, could you be able to locate it?
Absolutely.
So you prepared Coast Guard Exhibit 089, which is a presentation of the SAR Case Study After Action Report, and I will ask you, I will ask Lieutenant Steele to pull that up, and to go, you to lead us through each slide and the information contained on the slide, and if you need to go back to a slide, just tell Lieutenant Steele. She will advance the slides at your request.
Yes, sir. So basically, I just put in on the first few slides, the Coast Guard Statutory Authority to Conduct Search and Rescue. Obviously, 102, in my own words, basically says that the Coast Guard is to maintain the availability and maintain resources to respond to search and rescue above, on, and below the ocean. That's in my words, I got the CFR, if you want me to read it word for word, I can do that. 521 and 701, the code basically states the Coast Guard shall develop, establish, maintain, and operate SAR facilities and may render aid to distressed individuals, and protect and save property on and under the high seas and waters subject to the jurisdiction of the United States. So that's where our statutory authority lies. The next slide basically shows the search and rescue regions, which the previous witness kind of spoke about, and you can kind of see the alignment with regards to the SRRs, the search and rescue regions, and the Coast Guard districts. You can see Boston's search and rescue region up in the Northeast. Each region has a, an RCC. For instance, even though it's in D1, that entire region is called Boston Search and Rescue Region. Same with the 8th Coast Guard District, even though it encompasses most of the Gulf, it's RCC New Orleans. You can also see in relation to the Boston SRR, where the Titanic incident happened. So on September 8th of 2023, I was basically asked by my supervisor to participate initially, and then ultimately asked to chair the Titan SAR Case Study. A SAR Case Study is a non-punitive study that the Coast Guard conducts, that we basically use to improve the SAR system. It doesn't necessarily have to be convened because something bad happened, it could be to capture best lessons learned with regards to something that we'd never seen, like this incident up in Boston. I've also got to experience this personally, I was involved in the Seacore Power Incident in D8, and we also did, even though there was a lot of lessons learned with regards to family care, specific to next of kin, which the previous witness referenced, is probably one of the hardest things most people will do in their Coast Guard career, but the way we did it was worth capturing in order for other major incidents where there's multiple people missing on how to, we call it next of kin, but I would rather it be called family care, because it's not really next of kin at that point, you're keeping families updated with what's going on with regards to our efforts to try to find their loved ones. So, the board was, board consisted of five individuals. I was asked to be the chair. I had Dr. Gary, Dr. Tony Carvallo from the Human Factors Analysis Office at Headquarters, Commander Jessica Thornton, who's also at Headquarters, Lieutenant Seth Gross, who was, he's currently at OPM2, and then I had Ms. Lauren Safali now, who is the D11 Search and Rescue Specialist. So we convened that board. The goal and what we were ordered to do was first and foremost, we were trying to improve how we do our case studies in the Coast Guard, since I've been around, like I said earlier, we've viewed case studies as non-punitive and a means to improve the system, but they are formatted just like an investigation. So that in itself causes some disheartening with some people whenever we need to convene them for the right reasons. So we were looking at trying to come up with a better format, and we were going to call it the SAR Continuous Improvement Program, which has since been released in Commandant Instruction. So we tried to apply the Human Factors Analysis to this study. Ultimately, we ended up having to remove it, it just wouldn't work. We were tasked to also provide a report capturing all the lessons learned that we could glean from the Titan incident for improvement and implementation in the search and rescue system for the Coast Guard. We were to provide information relevant to the SAR system improvements for subsurface incidents, provide input to the interplay between the SAR system and the incident command system, analyze coordination between the Coast Guard, the U.S. Navy, and other DoD partners that participated, and analyze the limitations and challenges of the Coast Guard's interactions involving subsurface SAR. So we basically, I mean, there was so much information to pour over with this incident, it was, it was overwhelming. Just for instance, there was over 1,400 digital voice logger files alone that we needed to listen to, some of them were relevant, some of them were not. I'd like to thank NTSB for providing that transcript of the relevant actual conversations that were in those DVL files. But basically, we came up with five buckets, basically, five parts that we really owned in on during this. One, Critical Incident Communications. Critical Incident Communications is a means within the Coast Guard, it's a streamlined notification system that we can notify internally and externally, vertically and horizontally information to get other players involved, bring awareness to senior leadership, and bring the necessary subject matter experts to bear in an incident if necessary. That incident was 18, was delayed for 18 hours, it's supposed to happen within five minutes of notification. Quick Response Cards were also not completely fully filled out, now I will say, some of that was probably as a result of the QRC really was geared towards a DoD-type subsurface incident and not a commercial entity like, like Titan was. It was, it was very, very evident, and pouring over this mound of information that the SAR system was overwhelmed very quickly as a result of this incident as well. This, this was one of our challenges, was number two, with case documentation, as much of information as I'm telling you about for us to pour over, we've come to the conclusion that maybe at best 25 to 30% of actually what was done for the SAR response was actually documented in missile. Missile was not intended to be a live search and rescue documentation tool, it's archaic, it's not user-friendly, and it's more of a burden on our watch standards. In fact, I, I would argue that it takes away from their response and, you know, focusing on their response sometimes when the technology's clearly out there to have a CAD-type system where they could dictate, like 911 Operations Centers. The Coast Guard is looking at bringing a new suite online, last I heard, it was three to five years out. It was nearly impossible for the SAR system at D1 to capture everything that was going on, especially when they stood up the IMT, the Incident Command Structure. As Captain alluded to, search and rescue is prosecuted in a command center. It's, it's why command centers exist, and you have an outside entity while they may not be prosecuting the SAR case, they're making decisions, i.e. in the IMT, that are not making it back into SAR Case Documentation, which is the official record for that said SAR event. And I mean, some of the discussions that we, and we learned this early on conducting interviews with the SMCs, Captain Frederick, that there was, you know, assumptions that were being made with regards to the SAR response, interactions with next of kin, and so on and so forth, that were not in the missile documentation. SAR system and the ICS integration, ICS has never worked well for the SAR system. The SAR system is intended to be, you know, a full speed, let's go after it, you don't have time to stop and do the planning P, you know, when you have people's lives on the line. So I mean, it was kind of a disjointed IMT, especially initially, from what we gathered from the interviews and what documentation there was, and the sheer number of communications limitations with equipment, decision-making happening within the JRCC and outside in the Unified Command, just was problematic at best. That's not to say that they didn't do great things, they were coming up with very innovative ways to prosecute this incident, that, you know, I mean, as the Coast Guard has done for the 30-plus years I've been around, we find a way to tackle it regardless of what we have. But we are not the SMEs with regards to subsurface SAR, especially when you get to the extreme depths that the Titanic is lying on the ocean floor. We just didn't have it, and like with the other missions, we, we call on others who are SMEs and brought them into the incident command system. So the on-scene presence, and this was, was, yeah, we did. The individual sent to serve as a Coast Guard rep on the, the Polar Prince was not the proper makeup with regards to qualifications, didn't have, wasn't versed in the SAR system, wasn't versed in next of kin interactions, there was next of kin on the Polar Prince. And this decision was probably made because leadership was overwhelmed, they needed to get someone out there, given the distance, you know, the tyranny of distance involved in prosecution of this case. If they would have, I think that even better prosecution and information flow would have came if they had assigned someone that actually was versed in the search and rescue system, proper interactions with next of kin, SAR policy, resource allocation, because the on-scene coordinator was in fact the commercial vessel which we do it, it's obviously not the preferred, it's not the ideal fit for an on-scene coordinator for a SAR event. You usually want someone that can speak to the SAR system itself, that has the longevity to be on scene and can provide information back to the operational control. So, just, just some of the resources, and by no means are these all of them, the majority of resources that were used for the active search and rescue on the surface was fixed wing aircraft, long-range fixed wing aircraft, US Coast Guard HC-130s, mostly out of East City, Canadian, a Canadian P3 Aurora, basically the 106 wings sent an HC-130 as well, and then ultimately Coast Guard organic resources, the Coast Guard Cutter Sycamore ultimately arrived on scene and provided that on-scene coordinator function once they were there. The U.S. Coast Guard Sycamore is a aids-to-navigation vessel, but we train our people throughout the organization, especially our operators, to be able to speak to search and rescue regardless of the type of resource they're operating. Some other, the surface resources, there was a litany of them, like the Sycamore obviously was out there, three Canadian Coast Guard vessels, the Polar Prince, the Scandinavian Avlan, I'm not sure how to actually pronounce that, the Atlantic Merlin, the Deep Energy, the R-Atlante, HCMS Glace Bay, which was Canadian, the Scandi Vinland, which is also Canadian, and the Horizon Arctic, and there's a litany of other vessels that I've found in paperwork. And, and just to that point, you know, I've learned stuff just in the last two days that I wasn't aware of when we were conducting this After Action Report for nine months. Agencies involved, First District, JRCC Boston, obviously was SMC, they were overall responsible for prosecution of the SAR case. Coast Guard Sector Boston was involved, Base Boston, Land Area, Air Station Elizabeth City in North Carolina, the Air National Guard 106 Wing, U.S. Air Force Rescue Coordination Center was involved, the U.S. Navy, JRCC Halifax, which is Canadian Coast Guard, the Royal Canadian Coast Guard, NAVC, Transcom, the State Department, and IS Merlot, which to the point that Captain made as well earlier, IS Merlot in my 32 years of doing search and rescue with the Coast Guard is a term I had never heard of until this incident. So, the SAR efforts were absolutely unprecedented, you know, the timeless they arrived on scene given the tyranny of distance, they got there way quicker than I would have imagined the Coast Guard could have. The tyranny of distance impeded the SAR response, obviously, I mean, you're looking at 900 nautical miles east of Cape Cod. We initially had to rely on the Polar Prince, which I kind of referenced earlier, is not the best choice for on-scene coordinator, but it was the only choice they had at the time. Long-range air resources conducted the majority of searches, these searches were exclusively far surface if the Titan sub or the individuals on the sub had made it to the surface. Active searching was for submersible, Orts 5 crew, JRCC performed exceptionally, often creating innovative solutions to an incident never seen before in the maritime SAR community. It just, it was so much information coming in, that what they brought to bear was, was impressive, to say the least. And, you know, I mentioned the Coast Guard, despite what the CFR says with regards to our authority, we only have the capabilities to do surface search and rescue. Everything we have for subsurface is either brought to bear by commercial entities or the U.S. Navy. The U.S. Navy, Navy Supsalv is, is actually outlined in Chapter 6 of the Coast Guard Addendum, there's a Battle Watch Commander phone number in Chapter 6, which you would call to, to get Navy Supsalv involved in a subsurface incident. But most of Chapter 6 and what we've seen to this point in the organization is that policy, those, those Quick Response Cards are all written as if it was a U.S. Navy sub. In fact, it was kind of implied and insinuated in the case that the Navy would take SMC, but the Navy was not going to take SAR Mission Coordinator for a commercial vessel. So, like I said, the Coast Guard's confined to small boats, aircraft, fixed wing and rotary wing, and Coast Guard cutters for organic resources to do SAR. We have no capabilities for subsurface, it's actually very clearly stated in Chapter 6, the Coast Guard has no subsurface capabilities. We have no specialized equipment to assist in subsurface incidents, and that was one thing that we outlined in our After Action Report. Titan aside, there's actually daily excursions, I believe in D14 or D11, where we have not operating to the depths that Titan was, but that are taking excursions out daily, so we need to, you know, that was something we recommended be looked at by program, SAR, the SAR program, to ensure that if this does happen with these commercial entities, we have the ability to respond and have some type of technical expertise. So, and that's pretty much the AAR in the, in the SAR Case Study in a gist. Right now, the case study is completed by my team, we've all signed it, it has since been routed to CG SAR, which they will, they're talking about rerouting it at this point through D1 and Land Area for them to weigh in, but the final action memo will be the end of the study, and we're not at that point with the study, even though my team's completed their part.
Thank you. Some clarification, so you mentioned there was a recommendation regarding the submersibles that carry passengers in the 14th District. Was that a formal recommendation in the After Action Report?
It was, that we needed to basically, and I have, I have it in front of me if you want the exact words, but basically, we wanted the Coast Guard program, SAR program, and any other owner programs of that on the prevention side to take a look at making sure we have the right agreements in place, or, you know, how we would respond in the event that we did have an incident on one of these shallower operating commercial entities, and I'm 99% sure it's D14, the Atlantis, I believe is the name of it, they're taking 30 to 40 people out at a time, I don't think it's the depths of more than 150 feet, but still, that in itself would be a challenge to respond to for the Coast Guard if, if it happened.
And you mentioned next of kin on the Polar Prince, was that Mrs. Rush?
I believe so, sir, if I recall correctly.
And correct me if I'm wrong, did you say that the HVACs, which is the Human Factors Classification and Analysis System, based on a Department of Defense 7.0 program, didn't really work out for the board's evaluation of the search and rescue case?
We were basically trying to force a square peg in a round hole, we found out we'd probably been about 90 hours into conducting the AAR, in fact, the week that we spent at Headquarters with the team in one room with Dr. Tony Carvallo, trying to lead us to try to apply the HVACs, there was a combination of reasons, but the main reason was at the realization that the documentation was so limited, we couldn't, we didn't want to draw assumptions without it being in black and white in the official documentation. So, Dr. Carvallo, who's the HVAC specialist for the U.S. Coast Guard, was the one initially said, "We're just not going to be able to make this work." Unfortunately, I think we'd have been done a lot sooner with our study if we wouldn't have spent so much time, and that's not to say that HVACs is not a great tool and should be applied, similar to the Coast Guard's mishap analysis program for SAR case studies, where it can be applied to, but even in the AER, the part that we put into the CPS, Contingency Planning System, I believe is what's called, there was parts of the data that would not fit even in there that we had to do an addendum as well to the report that would not go into CPS. So, yes, sir.
So is Dr. Carvellis a trained psychologist?
I believe so, sir. Yes, sir. He's, they, they, his office, he knows HVACs in and out, he probably spent as much time training us as we did on the report in the first week. He's, I forget the office, I believe it's 833 at Headquarters.
Does the Coast Guard use that system for accidents involving Coast Guard aircraft, surface forces, and small boats?
Yes, sir. Any type of, any type of, you know, accident involving our resources where people are injured, resources are lost, resources are damaged, usually there's a mishap analysis board that's convened alongside the investigation into what occurred.
So, one of your recommendations discussed the Critical Incident Command Communication System, is that correct?
Critical Incident Communications, yes, sir.
Did the board examine safety recommendations from former Coast Guard Marine Accident Investigations to see if there were any safety recommendations related to improving that system?
We did not, sir, we did not look at that.
Thank you. So now we have the, the case study, the After Action Report. Is that ultimately shared with our international search and rescue partners so that we can help them and help us improve the process of search and rescue operations?
The report itself, I can't speak to if it, if in its current state, once the final action memo is done by CG SAR, if it's shared, but the lessons learned that we glean from it absolutely would be, whether it be in exercises with our foreign partners, Canada, Mexico, and the continental United States, obviously, you know, in the Pacific, there's a list, a list of other countries. Those lessons learned are shared at SAR conferences, and CG SAR too, I know visits a lot of those other countries as well to talk those type, talk about those types of lessons learned. And in turn, we get a lot of our lessons learned from those other, those other countries as well for the Coast Guard.
Are those lessons learned shared with the public?
Specific to the reports, sir?
Yeah, the lessons learned that, that come out of these reports are very, are they shared with the public?
And they're, once the final action memo is done, and we've had instances where the Commandant of the Coast Guard has basically foregone the EFOIA process and basically released it, I think American Triumph was one incident of that, but typically, to be made available to the public, they'll have to be sought off, sought after using the FOIA program, unless to the public, they'll have to be sought off, sought after using the FOIA program, unless Commandant or CG SAR dictates otherwise.
And FOIA is the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir. Freedom of Information Act.
I want to shift attention now, and Lieutenant, if you'll bring up Coast Guard Exhibit 065, which is daily briefing slides, they'll be on the screen in such a way that you can just take a look at them. So, this is the daily briefing slides that the First Coast Guard District would use to brief leadership, members of the search and rescue team, and provide information on the status of the search and rescue activities, is that correct?
I did not see these slides until my counsel provided them to me yesterday, but that, from what I gleaned from them when I looked over them yesterday, yes, this is what they were used to conduct their daily briefings at D-1.
So, just in general, I'm going to ask the Lieutenant, I'll ask you general questions. So, this slide would display where the various Coast Guard and other forces might be, and including the jump-off point, it's called the staging area, and then the accident site out on the high seas, is that generally correct?
That's correct, sir.
If you'll scroll to Slide 7. So, this would be the example of the various assets utilized in on-scene at a particular point in time, and you're familiar with these type of briefing slides, if not this one in particular?
Yes, sir. I've seen numerous briefs along these lines.
And if you'll scroll down to Slide 8, this slide shows the various assets en route at a given point in time, so that the senior leaders and the SAR controllers and so forth can be aware of what's on the way.
Yes, sir.
And if you will turn down to Slide 12, so this is for the benefit of the public, and I'm not going to ask you specifically about this, but the black lines that you see that move back and forth in a sort of rhythmic predictable pattern, would those be characterized as legs of a search pattern that some particular unit, either a ship or aircraft, were conducting to prosecute the search and rescue case?
The four searches that you see on that slide are aircraft searches, we refer to them in the SAR community as ladder searches, which are parallel or creep searches. They're typically used whenever you have a, you're not, don't have a high confidence on datum, which is the location of a search object corrected for movement over time, and that was one of the, and so this is a SAROP snapshot, I can't see which search epic it was, it looks probably Alpha or Bravo, but the colored grid underneath it is the particle concentration, which we base search decisions off of using our models for winds and currents and the movement of a search object in a search area at any given moment.
So, the Coast Guard and other search assets have very precise navigation systems, and they're able to tell these controllers precisely where search legs have been completed to make sure they conform to the mission requirements?
That is correct, sir, and we can actually look at what the aircraft did, we will give them the search pattern that you see with the dimensions and the positions laid out for every track, corner points, and everything on the search so they can conduct it, and then we can actually look at the aircraft on AMOS to see if it's actually in the search area after the fact as well. But usually, that's communicated back by the resource when they arrive on scene and they're, you know, beginning the search, and then when they're concluding the search.
And the AMOS acronym stands for, you can generalize if necessary.
It's basically an aviation tracking resource, similar to AIS but for aircraft.
And a surface vessel that was conducting searches would also be able to be tracked using this computer software model?
It would, it would, with AI, but through AIS, which we talked about earlier, we would watch the surface resources through AIS.
Lieutenant, can you zoom in to the middle of that slide so that, you know, keep going? That's good. So, what we see are these pixelated squares representing different colors. What does this tell you as a search and rescue controller in general about search and rescue operations?
So, SAROPS works off of a drift theory, and basically, you tell the program what your search object is going to be. You know, a 20-foot Cuddy cabin drifts differently than a 42-foot sailing vessel drifts differently than a bodyboard, it has every kind of search object, and if it doesn't have the search object, we can actually contact Christina Forbes, who's our oceanographer on staff at headquarters, and she can tell us which object, while it might not be the same as the one we're looking at, has the same variables with regards to drift. So, there's two factors when you're conducting with a search object in the water that causes it to drift. You have leeway, which is winds blowing against the exposed surface, which the Titan on the surface would not have had a lot of, and then there's sea currents, which in this part of the ocean, that would be the only current that you'd be dealing with. What the program does is takes 5,000 particles, and for intensive purposes, let's just say they were a 20-foot Cuddy cabin and not the Titan in this incident, we know how a 20-foot Cuddy cabin will move in the water based on the amount that's below the surface and the amount that's above the surface. We put that variable into SAROPS, it takes those 5,000 particles with all that, that we know the drift, and basically throws them in a washing machine, applies the current and the wind data, and it gives us a probability of where those particles would have moved. The hotter spots on that grid where the reds are would be the highest concentration of particles, and then obviously, as they get blue, they're not as, you know, there's a lower concentration of particles. The program then takes your effort, if it was a HC-130 with three hours of search effort, that we, it was an aircraft that could give three hours of search time, we tell the program, okay, this HC-130, what's its optimal altitude to fly to find the search object? We tell the program, it gives the three hours, and it basically takes, finds the best orientation and pattern with the proper track spacing to come into proximity to the most particles as it's moving through the search pattern itself. So, that particle grid you see, if you could actually turn it off and see it on the program, and you'd see those 5,000 particles rather than the colorful grid that you see on this slide.
So, the concentration of overlapping search pattern legs that you see in the upper-left corner of that would be the area where the searchers believe the highest probability would be of the people you were searching for?
Yes, sir, and this is a snapshot in time. If you back the program up, you might see where those particles were actually directly under those two patterns, but this is just a snapshot at a certain time during the search effort, but if you have SAROPS in front of you, you can back that up and see the particle movement in relation to the resource for the planned search. So, yes, where they're overlapping, usually when we start overlapping patterns, we have concern that there's particles that may have been missed, whether, you know, there's a bunch of different variables that can influence that, you know, sea conditions, visibility, then you add night searching with MVGs, you have a whole another, a whole lot of other factors that go into it, but those particles would have moved if you could see it live instead of just a snapshot in time like you see on this presentation.
And for the benefit of the public, this, this presentation, to the best of our knowledge, contains the daily briefing slides for the search and rescue for the Titan, so you'd see the change of the search and rescue patterns that we used, you'd see the different drift particles and so forth, so I'm only asking you about one snapshot in time. So, you mentioned the drift models and the ability of the Coast Guard to reach out to a professional within the Coast Guard and give you a more better definition of the search object. In the computer models that the Coast Guard has in the Search and Rescue Operations Computer Program, is there a model for a submersible?
Not that I am aware of. I did look a while back, unless it's been added in the last six months, I did not see anything in the search, in the search objects for a submersible. Now, they have search objects that would drift similar to a submersible, but not specifically a submersible.
And the challenge, just if I'm correct, the challenge is that the object might be in the water column, so we are not just having to search the surface, we're trying to predict the drift below the surface, correct?
Not if it was completely submerged. The Coast Guard's current data, it's, at best, it's at 50 foot, probably 50 to 100 foot down, I don't know the exact number. A lot of those models are from the US Navy, and they do have, you know, to depth for the submarine warfare aspect of the US Navy, and I can't speak technically on the, you know, exactly, but the idea for the search with regards to the current data is if there wasn't much above the water, currents would be the predominant influence, but there would have to be something, it would have to be at the surface for our models to be accurate. We don't track, we don't track anything that would be suspended or have any models that if something was exclusively in the water column in a neutral buoyancy state, that we would be able to do subsurface SAR, and we don't have any sensor capability on any of our organic resources either to look at that either, as well.
So, Captain Fredericks talked a little bit about the distress phase of search and rescue operations. Could you just briefly walk us through the different phases that the Coast Guard is responsible for by statute or regulation?
So, there's three phases for the search and rescue mission. There's uncertainty, which is you believe something's going on, but you don't have a clear picture, that, you know, there, it's clearly distressed, there's alert, which pretty much the word defines it, but you have a heightened apprehension that something is going bad, and then we have distress. Distress, Titan would have been in distress from the beginning when we got notified, as D-1 did, they assume distress as they should. There's certain category cases where you don't even have to evaluate to whether or not you're in uncertainty or alert, with persons in the water, persons known to be missing, vessel fire, you would clearly assume the distress phase. The distress phase means that we have to launch, we initially issue our urgent marine information broadcasts, we also put out, the names escaping me, but basically, it's like a NAV text at the district office that goes out to all commercial entities outside of VHF range, I can't think of the name, I apologize, and then we would pursue that, and we have a specific policies that we have to follow once we've assumed distress, including the response requirements of, you've got 30 minutes to launch, whether that be pull away from the pier or leave the ground with an aircraft, and 90 minutes to arrive on scene. That's basically how our response structure is set up, and our units are more or less positioned around the nation. Obviously, with Titan, we were going to be outside the response standard of, you know, 30 minutes launch, 90 minutes on scene from the beginning, given the sheer distance offshore.
Does the search and rescue jurisdiction of the Coast Guard apply to recovery operations once we've moved from the distress phase?
No, the Coast Guard doesn't do recovery, the SAR system doesn't do recovery, body recovery, or salvage operations. From the SAR perspective, we do not. I know other communities in the Coast Guard oversee, like salvage, but we don't do body recovery, we don't do recovery operations during an active SAR operation. At that point, usually once suspension happens, the SAR system steps away, and then any other regulatory authorities within the organization from the prevention side or the pollution side would move in, and that's not to say they couldn't be concurrently doing it during the active search and rescue mission, which has happened quite frequently, but the SAR system itself does not do recovery in the Coast Guard.
So, towards the end of the distress phase, we move into a determination that the Coast Guard is making a decision, you know, if we're conducting that operation, to suspend search operations. Can you briefly talk about the decision, how that decision is reached?
So, there's a combination of factors that go into it. Obviously, there's a survival tool that we use with hypothermia, a probability of survival detection aid, we call it, basically gives us a window of how long somebody might live in certain temperatures of water, and it is, it is on the liberal side, it goes, you know, it's always more than what would actually be. Those models were just recently actually revisited with CG SAR and updated. The conditions, for instance, if we've had an incident where the person was seen entering the water, submerging, and there were eyes still on scene, and we see them go below the surface and not resurface, I mean, that would be a factor that we would consider towards suspension, unlike if we knew somebody had made it to the surface, was wearing something that that could help keep them afloat, whether it be scuba gear, whether it be a life jacket, or what may, that would be a factor. There's a whole lot of factors that go into making the suspension, and it's one of the hardest decisions any person will have to make to be able to say, you're going to have to tell this family, I'm going to have to stop looking for your loved ones, knowing that you never found them. But, I mean, it's, the Coast Guard historically has gone well, I mean, at least double, if not triple, the amount of time that many other agencies that do search and rescue in this world do for finding persons that are missing in the ocean.
Because of the critical nature of that decision, is that authority delegated to senior Coast Guard leaders?
It's, so, the access authority and the SMC authority both lie with the district commander, the SAR coordinator, it's delegated down to the sector commanders for access, and every district can be a little bit different. By policy, it cannot be, go lower than the Response Department head, which is still in O4, usually in O5, and my district along the coast, on the coast, it's all O5s. Access is typically, it's that executive level look at the SAR system above SMC, and is usually reserved for the operational commanders at the district, the incident, the two, the DR, which is the Response Department head at the districts, as well as DRM, which is the Chief of Incident Management, who I work for, and some of the SAR specialists, including myself, have that designation as well.
So, before that senior leader would, who has that authority, would make that decision, they would have to be briefed on the full extent of the search and rescue operation and conditions on scene and so forth?
Whenever I have to make an access decision, it usually involves me asking a lot of very pointed questions with regards to what was done. What's the chances that we could actually still find this person alive? I mean, I will end up poring over the missile data, looking at, I mean, I trust but verify, I'll go into the probability survival tools and look at the numbers myself sometimes. It just, it's, making an access decision is the hardest things I've had to do in my Coast Guard career, both as a civilian and active duty. It's not anything I'd wish on anyone, so, and, I mean, it's still, it's even a harder decision. SMC usually gets close to these families, doing next of kin, talking with them, it becomes personal for them, and then they obviously have to be the one standing there next to access to tell these families that you're no longer going to look for them, but it is a very senior position. There's a lot of second look at everything before that decision is made to suspend an active search because the search object wasn't found, whether that's a person or a vessel, it's usually a person, and the sectors, just, you know, to say how serious it is, the sectors cannot make a decision to suspend searching for a person known to be missing without concurrence from the district. So, in any, in any case where persons are known to be missing, if that decision is made by the sector commander, they can't make it without the concurrence of the SAR coordinator, i.e. the district commander.
I want to shift gears, Lieutenant, to Coast Guard Exhibit 088, which are relevant extracts from Coast Guard search and rescue procedures. Do you recognize that page?
That's the SAR, the National SAR Plan.
Do you know offhand the year that SAR Plan was written? If I said 2022, would that appear correct?
That would appear correct, sir.
And it says in the highlighted portion, maritime involving, involving search and rescue of persons in distress from a water environment, that would include submersible subsea operations?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other guidance? This document, by the way, is available to the public on the internet.
All three of our guiding, so, the SAR Plan is what you have up in front of us right now, is available, it basically outlines how we're going to do SAR as a nation. AFRC has mentioned the Air Force Rescue Coordination Center, which they handle inland SAR, then you've got the National SAR Supplement that tells you how all these agencies will interact. The Coast Guard's guiding manual, which all of these are derived from IM SAR, Volume 1, 2, and 3, which are international manuals under IMO, International Maritime Organization. The Coast Guard Addendum is pretty much the bible for Coast Guard SAR prosecution. You know, most SAR practitioners don't spend a lot of time in the SAR Plan itself. When you get to, you know, program-level jobs, like I'm in, I probably spend more time in it than they do, the majority of SAR prosecution is done in the Coast Guard Addendum that, you know, is our, is our, basically how the Coast Guard does search and rescue. All three of them are available to the public.
Is there any other guidance for subsea search and rescue that the Coast Guard may undertake?
Not that I'm aware of, and I can't speak, you know, specifically to the IM SAR, you know, volumes, I don't recall, it's a three-volume set, them having much mention in it as well, but I can't say that. but I can't say that with 100% certainty. I'll have to go back and look. Now, the, those are international doctrine that many countries work off of them.
So Lieutenant, if you'll scroll down to page two, section 6.2.2, U.S. Navy Support. Captain Fredericks talked about contacting the United States Navy for assistance when the Titan incident occurred. And it basically says, just for clarification, it talks about the Navy Command Center Duty Captain has a phone number. Were you aware that we contacted that phone number?
I was aware that we did not initially contact that phone number from conducting my study. And my understanding from the documentation is the first phone call from D1 was actually to Atlantic Fleet. And then ultimately they ended up calling this number, which that number rings to the Battle Watch Commander at the Pentagon, who can, who can dispatch Navy Sub-Salv and Navy Ocean Eering.
And then the final line in that section, when the Navy responds, it normally assumes SAR mission coordinator and the Coast Guard takes on a support role. Until then, until then, the Coast Guard must respond with its own and other available resources.
Yes, that's what it says, though I, after doing this study, I feel that that's problematic at best because the U.S., this policy I feel was written with the response being a Navy submarine in mind. The Navy is not going to assume SAR mission coordinator for a commercial sub. They made that very clear during the active SAR case for the Titan.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Was that a recommendation?
It was. It is in the case study, yes, sir.
And then scrolling down to 6.2.4, the value of the mutual assistance plan. It talks about an effort to, between NOAA and members of the deep diving, submersible community. It says they are facilitating this effort to create mutual assistance plans. Did you take a look into that?
I did, I did not, sir. We did not look at that. I mean, I know that that's a program level initiative and I, I can't, I can't speak to it.
And then if you'll go down to the section 6.2.6, talks about a voluntary reporting system. The Coast Guard operates a voluntary reporting system for civilian submersible operations for salvage research, construction, et cetera. Submersible operators should be encouraged to provide the nearest Coast Guard district with details of their planned submersible operation. So in your report, did you find that this Titanic expedition, Ocean Gate had notified D1 of their planned operation?
I found no indication at all that there was any awareness by the Coast Guard that this dive was going on at Titan, at the Titanic wreck site.
So, and when I say you, I mean the board, for clarification. So you work in New Orleans. The Eighth Coast Guard District is home to a large community of subsea operations, remote operated vehicles, articulated, men and women in articulated diving suits, subsea saturation diving chambers. Prior to the Titan accident, did D8 conduct any SAR exercise or planning for an accident that might occur in that environment?
No, sir, we, we have not.
So for the SAR case study, is there a detailed process on how that search and rescue SAR case study is conducted?
So with the Titan case study, we were kind of given free realm to try to come up with a new system in conducting the study versus the way that we've been doing it for decades, which is very much like an investigation and the report very much looks like an investigation. So my team and I decided that we would look at it from the approach of doing a mishap analysis board type format, more, with more readability with regards to the specific issues, lessons learned, both good and bad. So the format is not at all like we have seen in the organization for the time that I've been around. So we did have a systematic approach at looking at the information, but there wasn't a, a key way of doing it like we have in the past because we were given kind of a free realm to look at it from a different perspective to come up with what we know now as the SAR Continuous Improvement Program, which was released, I believe, two months ago by Commandant.
So just a few more questions. So did the, the board examine, for example, the, that all the resources to handle a search and rescue case were in place? And so first we talk about resources that will actively conduct search and rescue operation. Did you examine that?
We did, and it actually, from a search and rescue perspective, since we were only looking at the surface search and rescue, none of us had the technical expertise to speak to subsurface SAR, nor did we have anyone with that expertise available to us. So it was relatively easy because the majority of search, searching done by Coast Guard was long-range aircraft, C-130s and P3s, and then some of our Coast Guard cutters. The detailed documentation of the search efforts, if the Canadians did do SAR and do patterns, was not in the documentation. So like those resources you showed on the slide with, with the, with the search, search patterns, you won't find that in there that we saw specific to the Canadian Coast Guard doing search patterns. But then they were out there searching, but they just weren't doing search patterns that we were directing them to do. Our first, our first attempt to get a surface resource to search was to the Polar Sea, or sorry, the Polar, the Ocean's Gate mothership. And they basically said they were taking their tasking from the company and we're not going to do any active surface searching. And then short of that, the only surface resources that searched were the Coast Guard Cutter Sycamore that we can tell from the documentation. Everything else was done with fixed wing aircraft.
So did the board examine the human factors? I, I know we've talked about the Human Factors Classification Society, but the human factors to make sure that search and rescue personnel were, you know, not fatigued, adequately trained and designated to perform their duties?
We had a very lengthy discussion about just that, not so much on the resource side because they have the parameters set when they're, with their fatigue standards with regards to the aircraft specifically. But usually with a, for instance, with an active SAR case, usually a SAR mission coordinator is ideally assigned from initial notification to conclusion of that incident, whether they suspend, close, or close the incident, you have one SMC. With how big this incident, how involved this incident was, with the amount of information and Pat, my peer in D1, Mr. Pat Petrock has been around quite a long time. He made a comment when we're conducting our interview that kind of stuck with me till today. It was the first time in his, and he's got 30-plus years of service as well, that he'd ever been prosecuting a SAR case and felt alone. He felt like he didn't have anybody to call on to bounce what, what she, what we should do next with this subsurface incident because we just did not have the expertise readily available to us. That's not to say his command wasn't supporting him. I know Captain Frederick was absolutely there for him. But with that said, because SMC was not able to go to sleep, given how much was going on, they actually changed SMC three times during an incident, which I could count on one hand in my time with this organization where SMC has changed during an active SAR mission. But the problem is, is like Cap, Mr. Petrock, I believe he's closer to 60, he'd been up for over 18 to 20 hours. And then they changed it over to a lieutenant commander who was the Command Center Chief, and then she was up for a day and a half to two days. And this isn't a, you know, standing around, I mean, you're in the command center, you're trying to digest information, you're trying to bring resources to bear, you're trying to look out for your watch standards. I'd never seen SMC change three different times, and I don't blame them, and I don't, while I don't see it as a best practice, they had no choice for health reasons because they were falling asleep standing up. There was just, this was such an involved incident and that kind of goes to another recommendation that the board and I made was, we need to identify who these subject matter experts are in the organization, just with SMC alone for an incident of this scale, to bring people in as force multipliers to prosecute these types of incidents instead of it, it taking a health toll on our people. You know, next to kin, and that's, you know, the role of doing next to kin, oftentimes your SMCs are secondary casualties, you know, just from the interaction with dealing with these families that are going through the stages of grief. I mean, some of them stick with you, there's no such thing as a good next to kin interaction. I mean, it just, it, I can remember every interaction I've had, you know, with families. In fact, I still hear from families from cases five and six years ago, because I guess they associate me with the last contact with their loved one, you know, despite the fact I stood there before them and said, hey, we're going to stop looking for your loved one. So fatigue is very much a discussion in the SAR community, not so much with regards to our resources because those requirements are in place, you know, for our resources, for our aviation resources, our cutter community, for our, our small boat community. It's our SAR practitioners that these kind of cases are taking a toll on and they're not getting the rest necessary. And when you get to that point, I would question that the decisions, you know, are always the best when you're at that point of exhaustion.
So there was a, with Captain Frederick, there was a conversation about the quick response cards. And there are quick response cards for fire, explosion, people overboard. And there was one at the time, is this correct, for a subsea accident?
There was one. It, it wasn't geared, it fit, it fit the mold, if I remember correctly, to a subsurface, a submarine incident, but it, I know what it was, it was geared towards a DOD entity, not a commercial entity. They used that QRC, he said two QRCs, you always have to fill out an initial quick response card that captures all the basic information for prosecution and launching a resources position, nature of distress. And then you move on based on your completion of the initial SAR check sheet to what kind of case is this? Is this an overdue vessel, which it was an overdue, and yet, and he alluded to it earlier, you have to confirm departure, non-arrival, which clearly they, they had confirmed. Usually that comes from the reporting source or a family member. But if it was a vessel fire, there's a QRC for vessel fire. So they used QRCs that fit the mold to prosecute this, but there wasn't one geared towards a commercial submersible incident. And I still don't think there is one unless I'm unaware of a locally created QRC, and if there is one, it's probably at the D1. I don't even think I have one in my portfolio at D8.
Since the incident, has the Coast Guard begun a conversation to create a quick response card for a submersible or subsea incident?
I've heard talk of it. I haven't been privy to any in-depth conversation about it.
So based on your knowledge, since the incident, has the Coast Guard updated any procedures or policies for subsea events where, you know, people are in distress?
Not that I'm aware of, other than what the after-action report that my team and I completed will potentially bring.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Sir, we've been going over an hour. I recommend we take a 10-minute recess and come back for further questions.
Sure.
The hearing is now back in session. Mr. Talbot, Lieutenant Commander Whalen has questions for you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Talbot. Earlier, Mr. Fawcett referenced the Coast Guard Search and Rescue Addendum, Chapter Six. And 6.2.6 is the voluntary, voluntary, voluntary reporting system. In your Coast Guard career, has, have you ever had anybody voluntarily report submersible operations?
Not once that I'm aware of. That's not to say it's not coming into a different department, but not from a SAR perspective, I have not seen it.
Do you believe in your professional opinion that awareness of a submersible operation would assist in the search and rescue process if it had to get to that point?
Absolutely. Awareness that something's going on in your area of responsibility alone, you know, kind of puts people in the mindset to be ready to respond and even in some cases, making sure that resources are available to respond in the event there is some type of emergency. We do it all the time, maybe not with submersibles, but just with all, with a lot of commercial entities, we do it a lot in the Gulf of Mexico with regards to drilling operations, you know, we, the old companies will make us aware that they're doing something that might be a little higher on the risk side so that we're prepared to respond in the event something happens. For instance, a commercial medical service might be down, you know, and Chevron or Shell might call and say, hey, you know, the consortium's down, they can't respond if we have a medical emergency on facility 200 miles offshore, you know. So absolutely, awareness, would it be a hu, it would, it would definitely make the response easier.
Have you, at any point in your career, or are you currently now any part of the training program for the, for the search and rescue enlisted members at the command center?
Currently, I just took, we, we are literally rewriting the entire search and rescue curriculum. It started beginning of last year. It's going to be called NSARS, National Search and Rescue School, instead of Maritime Search Planning. I literally took mods one and two. I'm on the curriculum evaluation and beta team for the new courses. It's going to be modularized based on where you operate in the SAR system. You'll have to take certain amounts of modules. So yes, I am, I'm heavily involved in both the past and coming SAR, SAR training for our enlisted and our officers, actually.
Are the search and rescue or command center personnel aware of the term oceanographic research vessel designation?
I had heard it before in my career, and I had, did not recall when until I was listening to the MBI yesterday on my phone. So I, I would guess the majority of members, especially with the genuity of our command centers right now, I would guess the majority of them do not, are not familiar with that term.
So if somebody were to call into the, and we'll utilize your, your command center, so the District Eight Command Center, and report that they were conducting a submersible operation, what would happen with that information?
They would prob, at, in the district command center or the sector, they would probably reach out to our prevention branch at the district, and that's probably where it would go in order to determine what was needed for it. I don't, it would not stay in the command center. Most things do not stay in the command center, short of the search and rescue mission. It's usually handed off to other departments that have ownership in it.
Is part of the training that the command center personnel receive regard, is it with regards to submersible commercial operations?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So we discussed earlier fatigue standards for, for aircraft as well as vessels. Are there fatigue standards for search and rescue command center personnel?
As of this year, there is now a command center watch standard, fatigue standards that came out, that was put out by the Office of Shore Forces, i.e. 741. There is still currently no fatigue standards for SAR mission coordinators in the Coast Guard.
Are SAR mission coordinators basically search and rescue watch standards?
No, they are, we, SMCs lie, SAR mission coordinators lie outside of the command center. They are that continuity for the entirety of the case. They are not allowed to be a watch position on the watch floor at, at any, at any point while they're serving in that capacity.
How were the fatigue standards, are you aware of how the fatigue standards were determined for the watch standards?
I'm not intimately familiar with how, because I don't work in the command center. I'll work with the command center. So I'm not intimately aware of the hours or the requirements with regards to watch standing. I, I know there's a, a maximum amount of watches they can stand in a month, and I think there's an hour total as well, but I, I know it's there, I just, it's not something I'm, you know, very familiar with. And it's brand new.
Do the human factors, individual who worked with you on, on this case, did, did you guys discuss the human factors with regards to fatigue?
We did, and it was something we had looked at potentially putting into the, the case study. In fact, we do make mention of the SMC changing three different times during the incident as a result of fatigue, but we identified it and, you know, I mean, our job was to basically identify, you know, lessons learned and it, the program, let the program figure out what the means of fixing it is, is going to be. So we did identify, it is in the AAR, yes.
Thank you. That's all the questions.
Thank you again, Mr. Talbot. Just a couple of clarifications. When we talked about the support vessel to the Titan, do you recall that vessel was the Polar Prince, Canadian flag vessel?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Polar, yeah, the Polar Prince. Yes, sir.
So going back to the fatigue, our potential fatigue at the SAR mission controller, does the SAR mission controller have to remain awake at all times during that duties, during the duty?
The SAR mission coordinator doesn't necessarily have to stay awake. They, they can be contacted oftentimes, and more often than not, it's when you're at home or you're doing something else. They, you serve SMC for a week usually at a time. Now, the, these operations unit controller, which is your controller of the SAR mission, they are an alert watch, they are not allowed to sleep, and that's, that's congressionally mandated. They can't stand more than 12 hours at a time, which came from morning dew.
And morning dew was a sailing vessel accident that occurred with fatalities several years ago?
Back, I think it was 89, right here in Charleston.
So is the problem with the SAR mission coordinator that they just receive multiple calls and it disrupts the sleep cycle?
Well, with an incident like Titan, even if, if I would have been the SMC, I would not have stayed at home. I would have went into work to be in the command center. I would have went into work to be in the command center. Just too much information to be able to process via phone calls, not to mention the burden I'm putting on my watch standards. They have to be calling me constantly to update me and, which is what happened at District One. I mean, they, they recognized what they were dealing with and that SMC stayed inside that command center for the duration, probably the near duration of the entire incident. You know, and then Axis took on his role, Captain Frederick, with regards to, you know, the next of kin. But I mean, with this, an incident this scale, with this much information, that you would have to come into work if you, if you weren't there already. And you're probably not going to leave work because this went on for days.
And sir, going back to the search patterns that we saw earlier in the slide deck, did you model the Titan's drift, assuming the Titan was on the surface of the water?
Yes, sir. If, if it was the submersible or the persons, I believe they used two, I'll have to go back and look, but I believe they used person in the water and then they also used the submersible on the surface. There was nothing below.
What did you use to model the Titan on the surface?
I'm not, I, I'll have to go back into SAR Ops. That's something I did have at one point. I forget what they used, what was the most likely search object with the same drift characteristics as a submersible. But I don't recall exactly what search object they used.
Were the temperatures at depth considered as a survival factor, Dina?
I, all, all the temperatures with regards to probably a survival were based on surface, air and water.
Understand. Sir, do you know if the Coast Guard has ever had any organic capabilities to conduct underwater search and rescue cases?
The closest thing I could find was we, we had sonars on the 378s back in the late 80s and they were removed. That is the closest I've been able to find to any submersible capability we've had.
Thank you, sir. Those are the questions I had. I'd now like to go to the NTSB for any questions.
Good afternoon, sir. Before I forget, a quick follow-up on the last question, the 378 sonars were used for the Space Shuttle Challenger, is that right?
I, I heard they were. I couldn't, I wasn't, wasn't in the Coast Guard yet. I heard they were used for the Challenger, but I couldn't say that with certainty.
Okay. You talked about the Polar Prince a little bit and how they didn't or could not or chose not to execute the search patterns that you sent them. Was that because they were looking, using their own equipment for a subsurface search?
And it was in the documentation that they refused to do the surface searches that we had initially given them because they were more concerned that it had not resurfaced and were focusing on subsurface, finding its location subsurface.
With the equipment that they had on board?
With the equipment they had on board.
Okay. Is there a means to transmit a search pattern to the Polar Prince or other vessels and for them just to import it into their chart? Or do they have to finger it into a, into the rectus?
The technology is there, but I don't believe the Polar Prince had it. Some of our resources don't have it where you can electronically, electronically transfer it via, to their NAV package to be executed. I know even with our aircraft in the Coast Guard, they have to put in specific points and then it fabricates it. It's not a upload a file from SAR Ops to resource. So I, I do not believe the Polar Prince had that capability. They would have had to do it manually.
Were any other civilian SRUs, search and rescue units tasked with a search, a surface search pattern?
Not that I found in the documentation.
I know you said you didn't get a chance to look at older, submersible, search and rescue cases or incidents. Is that right in your case study?
Say, say that one more time, sir.
Did, did I hear you say that you did not look at past or legacy investigations?
There wasn't any that we really could come across that met the criteria of this incident that we were able to locate.
Are you familiar with the Johnson Sealink incident? It was a submersible that became entangled in a Navy ship in Key West AOR with two fatalities in the 70s.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with it. I think we only looked back three decades.
Mr. Chair, would you permit me to, can I read a, read a recommendation from that investigation into the record?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So as part of that investigation, one of the recommendations was to the Coast Guard to actively collect information concerning worldwide submersible search and rescue capabilities so that the most effective equipment needed for use in future underwater emergencies can be expeditiously made available. To which the Coast Guard concurred and later on replied, as indicated in the response of November 75, the Coast Guard joined the Office of the Oceanographer of the Navy in funding a survey of worldwide submersible search and rescue capabilities. The survey has been completed and accepted by the Navy. It's also been provided to the Coast Guard District Rescue Coordination Centers and Headquarters Flag Plot. So is that study that has worldwide resources sitting on a shelf at each RCC? And who's maintaining it?
I, I could not answer you. I've never seen it. I have not seen it at my, at the district I work at. In fact, I have not heard of it until you mentioned it, sir.
Is, you touched on it earlier on, Ismerlo, what are they?
They're basically, I, like, until this incident, I had not heard of Ismerlo. They're, basically they're a sub-rescue company, a sub-rescue organization.
Did they provide the service so that we don't have to have a binder sitting on the shelf with?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm unfamiliar if they, they did for this incident or not, so.
Is there somebody that has this information? And if you call that 1-800 or that number to the Pentagon that you, we showed earlier?
If Navy Supesal has it, I mean, that would be one of the, one of the first calls that we would make in a submarine incident. But like I said, Ismerlo is not a term that I had ever heard or an acronym that I was ever familiar with in my 30-plus years with the Coast Guard until I got involved in this.
Is there a civilian company out there? I know there's, there's several emergency management that, companies that handle oil spills and know where all the resources are. Is there a company that does that for submersibles?
I'm unaware.
Okay. Your, your report, are you able to share the factual part of it? I know the analysis is internal to the Coast Guard. Will the facts, factual side of the report be made public?
I, I can't, I mean, basically it's up to the Office of Search and Rescue once they, they do the final action memo. Last discussion I had with regards to my submission of the cover memo as well as the two appendixes was they were looking at potentially changing it from me, my team routing it directly to CG SAR and rerouting it through LANT and D1 to allow them to weigh in as well. But until that final action memo is completed and signed by the Office of Search and Rescue, none of it is shareable publicly or externally. At that, at the point that that's signed and done, unless the Coast Guard chooses to make it publicly available, it can be requested via the EFO, the Freedom of Information Act, the FOIA request can be put in for it.
The IMO's manual, the IM, IM SAR manual, there's less than a page of guidance in there on submersibles. I know your, your addendum, it has a little bit more information. What are we missing? What tools, what guidance and what tools are we, do your people need to, to do this case, the next case?
I mean, I think from my professional opinion with regards to, I mean, this is such a, it requires a certain skill set, you know, technical expertise operating at these depths with these pressures. I mean, one of the, one of the conversations I had with Navy oceanering on the West Coast was even if they were still inside this capsule, they would have had no means to hook up and affect a rescue because the, I forget the term they use. Basically, the, the structure that they use to hook up to submersibles that are in trouble, i.e. Navy submarines probably most likely with oceanering, would not have been compatible with the Titan. So I mean, I, I think similar to how we do with the commercial industry, you know, them having a plan in place in the event they have an emergency, like the, I mean, our, our prevention community, you know, they, I forget the term on all commercial vessels, you know, they have to have a plan in the event they have a, a pollution incident. Because gaining the, the, the technology, the training, the skill sets, the currency requirements to do subsurface SAR is, would be an entirely different, I mean, it would require a lot of money and a lot of, and a more people, which we, we currently don't have in the Coast Guard. I think to a large part, I think it's going to have to be something that we put on the companies to have a plan in the event they have something occur. And then a notification process, one, for awareness that this is going on in whatever area of responsibility that this is happening in, you know, for that captain of the porter in this case, I mean, the district office would have been the awareness to know that it was even going on so that we could come up with some type of response. But I mean, this is a field that obviously, that, you know, the DOD and, you know, is an expert in, but even they don't, you know, from my, from talking with them, they don't even operate at some of these depths that these commercial companies are doing exploration at. So I mean, to say the Coast Guard's going to affect subsurface search and rescue at these depths, I mean, I, I don't see it happening.
The same, the same accident I referred to earlier, the Coast Guard Marine Board of Investigations report, different than the one I cited earlier, and I won't read this one into, into the record, but they recommended legislation to require awareness. Is that something that your case study would support?
It would absolutely support it. I was not aware that we were unaware until today.
Okay. I don't, obviously that recommendation wasn't followed through on, but, okay. And if I can circle back one more, I forgot to ask you, did you talk to the crew of the Polar Prince?
We did not talk to the crew of the Polar Prince during my, during our study.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Muse, for the record, the first recommendation you read from, was that from the NTSB investigation?
That first of all was, yes, sir.
Sir, Mr. Fawcett has a follow-up question for you.
Regarding human factors, so the board had a human factors expert, and that expert uses the Department of Transportation fatigue analysis tool, which takes the number of hours an individual has worked. And it turns out a product, basically an Excel spreadsheet that shows for that individual different color codes, red, green and yellow, red being fatigued. It takes into effect the, the work rest history, the circadian rhythms of the sleep patterns. Was this tool used to examine the work that the SAR mission coordinator did in terms of the fatigue they experienced?
We attempted to use that tool. And like I said, with regards to the documentation and when the, when the SMCs changed, changed out specifically, as I mentioned earlier, there were three, SMC changed on three separate times during this incident to three completely different people due to those fatigue standards. Because, talking with Dr. Cavalo, we were not able to get enough, glean enough information from the interviews because they didn't have the memory of the exact times they changed out, how long they were on the watch floor. It wasn't logged in missile to the point where we could apply HVAC to it accurately. And he was, we were, he made it aware that he was reluctant to try to force the fit for giving bad information because of the lack of documentation we had in order to give factual information to the HVAC process.
Did he create factual information for the report to support the board's recommendation?
With regards to?
To fatigue of the SAR mission coordinators.
We may, we, it basically, if I, if I recall correctly, it's a, a one or two sentences with regards to the SMC changing out three times during the incident due to fatigue. I'd, I'd have to get the exact verbiage, but it's not, we didn't make a recommendation with regards to timeframes that SMC should be up. We didn't feel that that was our place. That was a program level issue that needed to be addressed. We basically gave them the problem, they need to come up with a fix.
Thank you.
Mr. Talbot, can you clarify, when you say program level, what office that would be?
The Office of Search and Rescue. And I mean, the, the, there's going to be a couple of offices that would have ownership in, you know, the, the, the things we outlined in our AAR. But the Office of Search and Rescue, for all intents and purposes, owns the report.
And they're located at Coast Guard Headquarters?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go to Ocean Gate Council for any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Does the board have any final questions for Mr. Talbot at this time?
NTSB? Can I just ask one clarification? Where does the SMC fit into the incident command system? Do they become the operations section chief or are they a group within the operations section?
The SMC does not fit into the incident command structure. They're, they, they cannot reside, they're not, they're not supposed to be in the IMT. And I, they're supposed to remain independent of the incident command system.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And Mr. Talbot, for IMT, that's Incident Management Team?
Yes, sir.
Sir, that's all the questions we have. Appreciate your expertise and input to the board. Do you have any information that we haven't asked that would be valuable to our investigation, sir?
Not that I can come with off the top of my head. I, I just did, I did want to extend my condolences to the families and the friends of those, you know, five people that lost their lives during this incident. I, I don't have anything else I can think of at, at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Talbot, you are now released as a witness at this formal hearing. Thank you for your testimony and cooperation.
So that concludes the testimony of Scott Talbot and also the U.S. Coast Guard's public hearing. There were some final closing remarks and questions answered by the board from various news outlets, but these will be included in my upcoming documentary. So as for this testimony, it was an interesting counterpart to the one previously given by Jamie Frederick, offering more glimpses into just what was going on at the Coast Guard during the Titan's search and rescue efforts, both on scene and also back at headquarters. It was also insightful to hear about the processes and software used to determine a missing object's likely location, for example, and the search patterns that were conducted over the area. As stated, at the time of this testimony, things were still in motion, even though the case study had been completed. But it was interesting to hear about the recommendations, such as a universal component being used that fits and enables rescue vehicles to latch on and bring those in distress back to the surface, something Titan did not have. And after hearing the events and choices that unfolded at the Coast Guard, and given that Titan's dive was not made aware to them, it seems fairly clear that this sudden, rare event had them scrambling to a certain extent. And it seems, after hearing these testimonies and seeing the documentation provided, that they did all they could within a short time window and with what resources they had available. I think it was important to have these kind of witnesses at the hearing. They're focused directly on the Coast Guard themselves and not always in the most positive light. And I don't think the easy path was taken either to try and gloss over things and move on. So I do have to commend them for that. Overall, I think these testimonies have been pretty balanced, and I've learned a lot from them, and I hope that you, my viewers, have done so too. Again, I will keep this one short as it is a lengthy video, though it seemed right not to split it up as it didn't really have a mid or segue point that really called for it. Regardless, I thank you all very much again for watching and for your continued support and for sticking with this channel through countless hours of these videos. It does mean a lot to me. And as I said and want to stress again, my Ocean Gate coverage is still not yet concluded. So for now, I will save you all the time and end this one here, and I'll be back again soon with the next video. So until then, thank you all again, and bye for now.